This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Friedip, joined as always by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to start by asking everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two, any public comments to tonight's agenda. Mr. Katz.
Just a question about the property of 88 Basset Road. You're going to go into detail of what it is, why it is, and so on.
Yes, sir. Yes. Thank you, Sherman. Item number three, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of October 5th. Special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of that special meeting.
I will second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number four, the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes of October 6th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as well.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So ladies and gentlemen, forgive the voice tonight. I, last week, had some laryngitis, and many people probably thought that was a good thing. But, so if you hear a little bit of cracking in the voice, it's the voice recovering from last week's bout of laryngitis. So I'm going to take you through a little bit of an overview, top-line overview, and we'll start with the fact that about three weeks ago, the town went through another rating process with the rating agencies. And to make a very long story short, this was a very complicated rating call. And I'm happy to announce that we have been rerated AAA. This one wasn't easy, ladies and gentlemen. Our fund balance is not where it should be. They want a higher fund balance. But the overall economic development picture in the town, and I took them through in great detailed projects that we have coming up, kind of carried us over the finish line on this. So we retained the rating, and this becomes important as interest rates continue to rise. We are able to, if we need to. And next year will be another round of road paving, as an example. But we will borrow at the lowest possible rates even though we're in a rising interest rate environment. So that's the bottom line on that. After about a 90-minute rating call, we were rerated. We got the word about five days later. Bulk leaf collection. As you can see on the screens, the bulk leaf collection began on Monday, October 31st, which was Halloween, and it will continue through November 25th. And actually, if the weather is good, it may continue a week or two longer. So we're asking everyone to please keep the leaves out of the roadways and away from the mailboxes. What happens many times in certain sections of the town is that leaf piles get put in the road. And when they're in the road, off the curb, far off the curb, it creates a traffic hazard. And many times, the town will get calls where residents will call about their other residents who are putting the leaf piles in the road. So we're asking once again, we don't want to have to send the Public Works or the Police Department out there. If you're putting leaves at the curb, keep them on the curb, within the first 10 feet of the town right away from the curb end, and try to keep the leaf piles outside of the roadways. I know sometimes with a lot of leaves, it's not easy. But what we've seen is leaf piles in the road, not even touching the curb. And it really is a hazard. So we're asking for your consideration on that. And keep the leaves away from the mailboxes, because we don't want to have a situation, ladies and gentlemen, where the mail truck can't deliver the leaves because he doesn't want to go through the leaf pile. So try to keep it away from mailboxes also. Our Public Works Department may provide additional collections, as I mentioned, weather permitting. The weekly schedule is available on the town's website, www.NorthHaven-CT.gov, in that you'll see the weekly schedule of the streets. And many times during the season, weather permitting, we go back to the same streets two or three times. Bagged leaves may also be brought to the recycling center on Elm Street during operational hours at any time during the year. But we're maintaining the service, and that is the overview of what the service will look like again this year. From an economic development standpoint, these are some of the projects I reviewed with the rating agencies that carried us over the finish line to become AAA rated again. This is just a few of the many projects that I profiled. And these projects include the Panera Bread being built, the Hampton Inn being built, the new virtual reality center that should open up in December, the former DSW. We will see the Halloween spirit store vacate that. And then, I don't, I can't announce it tonight, but I will be announcing a major retailer going there. Five Guys still waiting for a stove and the oven to come in. The supply chain was backed up. Starbucks is up and running. The former Donato's site, we are, I have a great opportunity there, ladies and gentlemen. I have a tremendous opportunity. There'll be a grand slam home run here in North Haven. But it involves a complicated situation involving the building owner and the fairgrounds, and both parties have been great to deal with. So we'll see where that goes. I've talked before about the front of Amazon, North Side and South Side. Those are going to happen, probably the North Side first, and then the South Side. The North Side, right now, the plan is for a retail plaza. Could be stores, could be a restaurant in there. So that should play very well on Washington Avenue. Now, at 445 Washington, emerging from the ground, you've probably seen it, is the 225 apartments there with mixed-use retail on the first floor. That is really moving forward very, very quickly. Across the street, the former Fantasia, Conex, I broke ground with them recently. They're expanding south, as I've mentioned before. And then the 88 apartments will be built in the back. The only game in town, I visited with the new owner last week. I introduced him to someone that wants to put an indoor sports facility there. But the plan there is primarily right now to retrofit the building and to put in a public safety training facility there for police and fire. That's the model that the new owner would like to bring forward. And he and I are working together to see if there's a way that we can put maybe a soccer field there or an indoor sports facility, which was the purpose of me going out there last week, bringing this business there. On top of this, we, I've been working with the new owner of 400 Valley Service Road. I presented him a variety of opportunities, introducing him to some people that want to put a business there. So we'll see where that goes. So all over town, we've got a lot of activity, and there will continue to be activity. This is just a small portrait of everything that I spoke to the rating agencies about, including pictures, put a PowerPoint presentation together for them. And so we're right on track with economic development. There have been some failures, and some of those failures involved trying to get a major retailer at 1,000 Universal Drive, but because it's too far away from the main district, the retailer backed out. And now we're trying to work with that retailer either at the Donatos or somewhere else on Universal Drive. So I often say, baseball has taught me a very valuable lesson. Even though I'm in three different Hall of Fames, baseball teaches you how to deal with failure. So I'm not discouraged by failure. It just fuels the competitive fires even more. And that's why you're going to continue to see new businesses coming to North Haven. From a noteworthy standpoint, this is something new, important, and much needed. And this is going to be called the North Haven Prevention Council. I'm going to turn it over to Valerie in a second. But as we've seen in our municipalities all over the state of Connecticut, including North Haven, there's a rising need for even more mental health counseling services and substance abuse issues. So Val, I'm going to turn it over to you for a few minutes to explain this, what we're doing here.
Sure, and I have a few notes here just to help me along. But the Alliance for Prevention and Wellness has contracted with the State of Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services to provide prevention training for behavioral health and promote mental health services to 36 towns and communities in the south-central region of Connecticut, which is also known as the Demis Region 2, and that is the region that we are in. Our health department, Quinnipiac Valley Health District, has partnered with the Alliance for Prevention and Wellness on the formation of a North Haven Prevention Council. So this is something brand-new for us here in town. And the council, they are seeking members. They're looking for members of the general public. They're looking for members of our school system, our residents, anybody who is interested in learning more about what the issues our residents are going through and how we can work to address those issues, those mental health and substance use disorder issues. So they'll be with the hope that, gathering together with our community members, that we will be able to come up with some initiatives that would be geared toward this subject. And as Mike mentioned, this is much-needed, and it's a very serious topic right now among many communities. So the first meeting they're having is on Tuesday, November 15th, and that'll be from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., a short meeting. And that will be at the Moonrise Cafe on 2 Broadway over near Bellini's Restaurant. So anyone interested in attending should contact the Alliance for Prevention and Wellness. They're prevention specialists, and her name is Nicole Mason, M-A-S-O-N. And you can reach her via email at nmason@bhkare.org. If anyone is interested and didn't get to jot down this information or doesn't have the internet, please call the selectman's office, and I would be more than happy to help you with this. So that's about it. Thank you.
Okay, before we go to the next slide, there's a couple things I'd like to mention that aren't in these slides. On Sunday, November 13th, once again, we're partnering with Paulette DeMayo, who came to me years ago, one of our residents, for a veterans cleanup. And what that is, ladies and gentlemen, is that there's a group of volunteers throughout the town of North Haven, town residents, many Rotary Club members, and Quinnipiac students, that we go around and we clean up leaves and debris from veterans' homes. So that's a very important thing. This is like the ninth consecutive year. So I usually join them, I give a speech, tell everybody how appreciative we are, and then they just go throughout the town with all the veterans who've signed up. That is Sunday morning at 9:00. Now, as far as Veterans Day is concerned, tied into Veterans Day, tied into that day, there's also, and I've been working closely with the Rotary Club leaders on this, there's a pancake breakfast at the middle school for all citizens, including veterans. And I think it's $5 for a ticket. So that's handled, or that's being had in terms of hosted by the North Haven Middle School, the Rotary Club. Rotary Club members attend. They get there very early. I'm there with them also, but they prepare the pancakes, the sausage, the toast, coffee. And it's really a remarkable thing to see. So they know they have my support. We've been doing this for many years with the Rotary. So that is in the morning. There will also be a veterans ceremony on the green. And that's probably going to be at 12:00 at this point, on the North Haven Green. And we're working with the American Legion Club on that. Normally, that's earlier, but because of the pancake breakfast, we want to make sure that the seniors and the veterans can attend the pancake breakfast. So that'll be noon time on Sunday, the 13th. And then from there, at all those events, I'll be going to Coach Bob DeMayo's farewell dinner. And then from there, I'll be joining the Sons and Daughters of Italy in the afternoon as some of our prominent residents are being honored there. So Sunday, the 13th, it's going to be a very busy day here in North Haven, Connecticut. In addition to all that, we recently held a pill return in conjunction with the state DEA. And this happened on October 29th at Fire Headquarters. We filled eight boxes with medications that were no longer needed. In fact, we're taking prescription drugs out of medicine cabinets in North Haven as part of our role on trying to address substance use disorders here in town. To date, we've held 21 take-back events, because we do this twice yearly. One of the first ones I was at was the weekend of Storm Sandy, I remember. That was one of the first times we had done it. And I'd like to extend a thank you to all those who took the time to bring their medications to safe disposal. It's a drive-through at our firehouse. Valerie's there every year. I've attended it many years. I think this is very important, and we have a great group of volunteers that help us with that. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, all five districts. You would, as a resident, vote at your normal polling place. All the polls are open from 6:00 to 8:00. And a special thank you to our registrars, our town clerk, and all the poll workers and all the many people involved with this year's election. It's not an easy job, and we appreciate all of their efforts. Don't forget, please come out and vote on Tuesday, the 8th. And Mr. Katz and I, I wanted to share something that he and I are doing. We're going to be enhancing the North Haven menorah lighting this year. Mr. Katz and I have met with Rabbi Heck, who is located in Hamden, but the rabbi also is a new resident in North Haven. And he came to us, he called me to see what he can do to help participate. Sherman and I met with him. We have a follow-up meeting with the Rabbi Sherman, as you know, on the 14th. And our goal is to expand this, to get more people to come to this. And based on some of the rabbi's suggestions, in terms of some of the things that he's seen that have been successful down through the years, we're going to be implementing some of his thoughts and his ideas. And Sherman, I think you'll agree, the rabbi was delighted with our meeting that day.
Oh, yeah. You already got a little text from him.
Good. So that is going to be on Sunday, December 18th, on the green. However, it might change to Monday. So let me explain. So the first day of Hanukkah is actually the Sunday, the 18th. So we're going to try to accommodate the rabbi. So Sherman has agreed to light the light the first night. But the actual ceremony will be Monday, the 19th, to accommodate the rabbi's schedule and have him there. And then we will have a succession of the light being lit every night after that. That's the plan right now. If it changes at the December Board of Selectmen meeting, we will update you. And then back on Sunday, December 4th, we will be doing our Christmas tree lighting on the green. I'm hesitating here because it's kind of a very poignant situation. We have two very poignant stories at opposite ends of the emotional spectrum. I'm trying to accommodate both. On one hand, we have a new Ukrainian family who's moved in, and I've been actively involved with them at the Rotary Club, who's helped with donations. I've had businesses make donations. We have a wonderful sponsor's family in town, Jean and Mike Cavadini, who first came to me. They're sponsoring this family. We've helped them, my office, myself, find them a location to live. We met with them in my office. They were so appreciative, so happy after what they've gone through in the country of Ukraine. They have a 16-year-old son whom we helped get into the high school, who's thriving already in the high school. And these are the emotional things that go on that not many people realize that go on in my office. On the other side of the emotional spectrum, we have a family who lost their father, one of the police officers who perished in the city of Bristol. So the mayor of Bristol and I have been in close contact. And we were together at the statewide mayor's convention the last couple of days. And we're going to be extending, based on some family feedback, extending an invitation that the family liked the Christmas tree also. So I'm in the process of working this out. So when we look at this ceremony, it's always awkward and difficult to determine what the best approach is. My goal is to have both families honored. And that's the plan on Sunday, December 4th. I'm still trying to figure out the logistics, but that's our plan. Sherman, thanks for all your help. You were the one years ago that came to me on the menorah lighting. So I thank you for that. And I'm really hopeful that with Rabbi Heck, we could bring it to a higher level, which you and I have always hoped for.
Yep.
So, thank you. And that is where we're at, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Before we move on with the agenda, I just have two comments I'd like to make about the points you made in your overview. First about, well, actually, three. I think it's great about the tree lighting. I think both involvements would be great. If there's anything Bill or I can do to assist with that, I'm sure we would both be willing to help. On your comments about leaf collection, I'm glad you brought it up. I agree, it's a big problem that leaves piled in the street. You mentioned cars having a problem. It's also a problem for pedestrians, because you have people who are walking or riding bikes. People are still riding bikes in my neighborhood, because the weather's so nice. It's hard to say how long it'll last. But, you know, they're darting around piles of leaves, and that is a danger to pedestrians. So please, I just want to restate what the first selectman stated. You have to keep those leaves on your own property by the curb. You mentioned, you know, you don't want police involved, but it should be pointed out that there is an ordinance that has a fine for it. And I don't think anybody has ever been fined for it. But, you know, you have to think more about the community and not just your lawn.
I'm glad you brought these other components up, because it's so true. Whether it's pedestrians, I've heard from people who are riding bikes that almost got hit, the schoolchildren, the school buses. So there's more to it than just what I mentioned about traffic. All of that, I guess, is under the category of traffic, but there's so many different levels to this. So, and, you know, we're going to be out there picking leaves up. So Sally, I'm sorry, but go ahead.
No, no, it's just, I just wanted to reemphasize that, because it's a big problem, and it does affect traffic. And as far as your summary of veterans, I'm glad you mentioned noon for the ceremony on the green, because my invitation said 11:00, but I understand now, they're changing it to noon. I just wanted to talk very briefly about the veterans' leaf pickup. You mentioned that. You say you go and make a speech. I never made a speech, but I helped rake leaves. So, and they always raked my dad's property the last few years of his life. So it's a great cause. Are they meeting, are they meeting at the North Haven Congregational Church, as they usually do? Do you know that?
I do know this. They'll be meeting on the green that day.
Okay, because sometimes they've met at the church. I wasn't sure. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you. That's it.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay.
Yeah, Mike, it is, it's, I think you said it's November 12th, right?
No, it's Sunday, 13th.
Okay, so they changed, because I think I did read something that said it was going to be the 12th. Did they change it to the 13th?
Yes, it's the Sunday.
It's always been Sunday, the 13th, I think. My invitation a few weeks ago was Sunday, the 13th.
It was Sunday, the 13th. Just wanted to be short.
Yeah.
Sunday, yep.
So for pancake breakfast, the ceremony on the green and the leaf, cleanup for veterans is all on the 13th.
Right, in addition to the two other ceremonies that are going to be taking place in the afternoon.
Right. I mean, I know that the three of us have always been very dedicated to veterans' events, and we all, three of us, attend them. And you talk to people, and they're very supportive of our veterans. So there's three great events on Sunday, the 13th.
That's it.
So if you say you support them, get involved and show up or help rake or come to the ceremony and show your support.
Yeah, it's so important, to Sally's point. They invited me to speak at the Legion Club a couple of Thursday nights ago. And they really appreciate the attention. They appreciate updates, similar to what we're doing here. And they like engaging with me on the questions and answers. But they really appreciate the veterans' leaf pickup. They really do. So, and they feel that they're supported. And this pancake breakfast, it's really run by the Rotary Club. They really like that pancake breakfast. They really do.
Yeah, my father used to love it. Okay.
Next item?
Thank you, yes.
All right. So this is an update on the Affordable Housing Plan. And Jennifer Capola is going to be here tonight. Bill Richards is here, he's on a housing committee. So Jennifer asked me to read the latest update, so bear with me. In effect, what I might do is, because I'll be talking about 88 Basset Road and knowing that I've got this touch of laryngitis. Ms. Buemi, I'm going to ask you to read this, okay?
Certainly, I'd be happy to. It is entitled, "Update on Affordable Housing Plan for the 11/3/2022 Board of Selectmen Meeting." By way of update on the status of the Affordable Housing Plan, the Advisory Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission were unable to meet on October 17th. The new date for their joint special meeting is Monday, November 14th. The meeting will be held at 7:00 p.m., both in person in the Board of Education conference room on the third floor of the Town Hall Annex at 5 Linsley Street and via Zoom. The purpose of the joint meeting is for the committee and the planning consultant to obtain input from the commission on the revised draft plan. As explained at our last board meeting, following the committee and commission's discussion and any revisions to the plan that come out of that discussion, the committee will refer the plan to our board. I assume that means?
Yes. This word, yes.
Okay. That's either me or you or Bill talking. So it's going to be after this meeting on the 14th. The plan will come out in that discussion, and the committee will refer the plan to the Board of Selectmen. Our board will review the plan and notice a public hearing on it before acting to adopt the plan. Okay, so we're not getting the plan tonight, as we anticipated. That's fine.
Okay, so.
Got moved back a couple of weeks. So will we have a special Board of Selectmen meeting to do that?
I don't think so. About the next meeting, right?
Yeah, I talked with Jennifer briefly today, and she thought that the public hearing might not actually take place until January, because the plan, they still have to meet now that it got pushed off to November 14th and have the holiday, and then they have to make any adjustments to the plan. And then by the time they get it to the board, and then we're probably going to have a, we have to notice the meeting 35 days in advance, the public hearing meeting. So, and she likes to run it twice, so like a week apart. So that is going to push us probably into January for the actual public hearing.
So we're going to miss our submission date, our submission target date, I should say, that we discussed last month of December 31st. We're going to trickle into 2023.
But we will keep the state posted on that, so as long as we show them the progress.
Because you were supposed to send, we authorized you to send a letter. And I thought that the date that was going to be in that letter was December 31st. So do we have to authorize you to do another letter? Or as long as Jennifer or you or somebody keeps the state informed and keeps it on simmering, if I should say?
Yes. At this point, we won't need to redo the letter. But if she comes back to us, let's say, beyond that, I think we're going to have to redo the letter, so.
Okay, because we need a Board of Selectmen meeting to do that.
To do the letter, yes.
And, okay, all right. Well, they couldn't get together. It's a lot of people to put together.
It is.
And so it's postponed a couple of weeks, so, and we have to work within the confines of holidays and the 35-day requirement. So I'm sure we'll get it done in January. Or I hope we get it done in January. Okay.
Bill, I'll ask you to read number seven.
Number seven is to consider and act upon a resolution recommending Number seven is to consider and act upon a resolution recommending to the town meeting the waiver of the town's conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Basset Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985.
All right, before we get to Aces, let me summarize what this is about. Sally, this is something you remember from 1985 also, like I do, when we were, I was just a resident at that point. So Aces has the opportunity to purchase the building from the State Department of Education. Aces, because the building needs a tremendous amount of work and remediation, Aces would then qualify for a grant. Now, in the deed from 1985, it says that any use that is considered non-residential, post-secondary school, any use beyond that, the town has the first right of refusal to purchase the building. And that purchase price will be determined by our outside appraiser and the state's outside appraiser. So it's not my intention to purchase a school that needs probably millions of dollars' worth of work. The other remedy to comply with the deed from 1985 is to take it to the townspeople. So this is at a town meeting for the town people to vote on this issue, which I'm happy about, that we can have the people have a voice. So tonight's item on the agenda is to have this discussion, maybe talk about it a little bit further, answer any other questions, and then warn the town meeting to have the people weigh in. So let me summarize it again, that you might be wondering, well, what is the usage? Because the deed says that it's non-residential, post-secondary. The plan for Aces is to put, is to put higher special education programs there, which do not qualify as post-secondary. It's a different category. So the intention of Aces is to increase special education services for those children in need, who may be on the spectrum with some of the special ed curriculums that are needed for those children on the spectrum. So we have to make a decision here, and I hope the decision tonight is to bring it to the town meeting and for me to explain it. And I'll have Aces there to explain it also, as to what's happening that has triggered this deed clause that allows the town either to purchase it, because we have the first right of refusal, or to allow the town meeting and the people to vote on letting Aces buy it, apply for a grant, and then renovate the school, which needs tremendous renovation. None of that has anything to do with our owning the fields. And still, our sports program, softball, football, girl's softball. The football organizations use it in August, prior to their season. We have Little League using it, scooters use it. All of that remains in effect. It's all about the building itself and the inculcating, to use that word, of special ed services into that facility. Questions?
Well, we should make it clear, this is, you mentioned a long time ago, this is the old Orchard Hill.
That's right.
Site, which then became Gateway. And, and when we, I was on the Board of Finance at the time of this controversial sale. Well, I mean, we, I mean, I was at the, on the, at the time that it was sold to the state.
Orchard Hill.
Which was one of our newest schools at the time. It's built in 68. So the deed where the town transferred the title to the state must have had some provision in there, giving us this conditional right to repurchase. What, what do you, I, I got to apologize. I meant to try to get down to the town hall today to look up the deed and I just got too busy at work and could not get down there. But I certainly will get down there before the town meeting. I'm never going to stand in the way of sending something to a town meeting. But depending upon what I find and what I hear about it, I may have a different position at the town meeting. I don't know, because I just really don't know much about it. But it seems like the town has this right to repurchase the property, the, the building.
Right.
So what are those, it says conditional right. Do you know what the conditions are?
Yeah, well, the conditions are if, if the, the current tenant.
Yeah.
Wants to do something that's non-residential or non-post-secondary, which special education is not.
Right.
That triggers the clause in the deed.
So that was it?
That was it.
That was the only right?
That's the only, that's it, right.
Okay, okay, so that triggers the town's ability to exercise that right per the terms of the deed of conveyance back in 1985?
Exactly.
Okay, all right.
So, so, you know, Bill, you live right there, so you can go ahead.
And at the same time though, too, I think, you know, as opposed to the existing, the Connecticut Department of, the Connecticut State Department of Education, I think is, is not going to make the change in the usage. I think they're going to sell the building and Aces will make the change.
Right.
So it's kind of almost a two-step process, I think, as opposed to, you know, I think it would, even if the state, just from what we, what you said, Mike, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, even if Aces is the tenant, you know, with the Department of Education still owning it, if they made a change in usage, that would also trigger that provision in the deed.
That's right, the deed says we have the first right to buy it or call it to a town meeting to have the residents vote on it.
To waive it, right.
Either way, but, yeah, so I think there's really a two-part, where Aces is going to buy and rehab it as well.
Well, my feeling is that they, yes, my feeling is they need financing to, and, our right to repurchase is, is an encumbrance that would prevent.
Exactly.
That financing to take place.
Right.
And, and when we sold it back in the mid-'80s to the state, we sold the school, we, we did maintain the fields.
Yes.
So there's no change in that. That's very important for lots of people out there to understand that.
No change in that.
Yeah, good, so that's never changed. That's, that has been the same since we sold it in the mid-'80s for $5 million.
So let's stay on this point now, Sally just mentioned. So consider this, in 1985, the sale price was $5 million, 37 years ago. I don't know what the appraisal would be, but let's say it's double, $10 million. My estimation, and it's just, it's just an estimate, is that there is at least $2 to $5 to $7 million worth of remediation upgrades and remodeling there. So in my estimation, when we consider that financial impact for the town to buy it and then consider displacing all of the existing Aces students who were there, those are two honorable situations, as I see it. So, but that's for the people to decide. So.
Okay.
The property record actually, for the town actually shows it having an appraised value. I'm not sure, Mrs. Steller, with the, like you mentioned earlier, Mike, that we'd have to get two different appraisals.
That's right.
It's showing 14.5 million, actually. And that was the appraised value of the land, so. But actually pushes beyond maybe the 10 that you've estimated to repurchase.
Well, that might be building and land, you know?
Yeah.
Because usually an assessor's card has it broken down between land, building, and other improvements on the property. But, no matter.
The fields, though, are not part of 88 Basset.
No.
They're 80 Basset, I think.
Oh, they are, they have a different address.
They have a different address.
Okay.
I went online, you know, to the property records online.
Okay.
The assessor's card, and they actually have a different, a different address.
Okay.
I think if you found that mistaken, your backyard is a, is a pathway into those fields, I think, right?
Well, there used to be, it's kind of.
Overgrown now, right?
Yeah, it used to be a paved pathway with a fence. I used to ride to get to the tennis courts.
The, the one between the houses on Basset, there still is a paved one.
Yeah, oh, I thought that's what.
No, but there used to be a, through the property, through the, you know, through the backyard, there used to be a walkway, you know, through the vegetation, everything, which is.
Wow, okay.
So, but like Mike said, again, looking at it, it doesn't impact the fact that we have the football practice and softball fields there.
Right.
They still are town property.
That will always be preserved, as far as I'm concerned. That's so critical, the girl's softball, football, Little League, scooters, so we maintain that.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay, well, with that, number seven was our discussion. I will read number eight, but I, I will do a little bit more research on my own, as, as we all should. So going to item eight, I will make a motion that resolved that the Board of Selectmen recommend to the town meeting that the town's conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Basset Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985, be waived by the town. So I'll make that resolution.
All right, is there a second?
I will second that, that motion.
All right, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next.
And following that resolution, I will, we will have a call now for a special town meeting to be held Monday, November 21, 2022, in the upstairs conference room at Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, at 6:30 PM to act upon the following. A, to consider and act upon a resolution by the Board of Selectmen recommending to the town meeting the waiver of the town's conditional right to repurchase the real property known as 88 Basset Road, said right being set forth in the deed from the town to the state of Connecticut dated December 17, 1985. So that's the only item on the agenda. So we have that call. We have to vote on the call?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we call that town meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, here in none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item 10, who would like to take that?
Item number 10, resignation and appointments. The first one is the resignation of Kristen Cuijano, 141 Clover Lane, from the Conservation Commission, term to expire August 31, 2023.
I'll second that resignation.
Kristen's done a lot of work in the town. And she first reached out for me years ago and she did a great job in terms of helping with litter cleanup. And she came to me after that, wanted to stay involved with the town. So there was a slot open on this and she was appointed by this board. But with time constraints and her life, she couldn't do it anymore. So that's why she resigned. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, Kristen, for all you've done for the town. And I know you served here faithfully, but thanks for everything you did in helping us on the litter patrols. You were really instrumental in that. And thank you for attending and being, being part of that ceremony at Sineaway Pond last year with me. Thank you very much. Okay, so we'll call, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sally?
Bill, can you read the next one, too, please?
Sure. And then I'll, I'll motion in turn for the appointment of Alan F. Riggs, 171 Clinville Road, to the Conservation Commission to fill the vacancy of Kristen Cuijano, term to expire August 31, 2023.
I will second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
And I would like to just ask, and I want to make it perfectly clear, this is no statement that I, I know of Mr. Alan Riggs. He's a great public servant to the town. There's nothing to do with him personally. I just wanted to ask, because this is replacing Kristen and she was a Democrat and Mr. Riggs is listed as unaffiliated. When this, and I realize that with appointed commissions, as opposed to elected, there's no obligation of this board to replace with the same party affiliation. If it's an elected board and an elected person resigns, we have to, of course, as you both know, go with the same party. With appointments, there is no requirement of that. And I understand and respect your concern that unaffiliateds get spots on our boards and commissions, and they have many. But it always seems like unaffiliateds are replacing Democrats that leave. And when Republicans leave, they're always replaced by Republicans. I just wondered if, if there was any attempt to contact Ms. Caldwell for, to fill this position with a Democrat?
No, I'll tell you why. Because I, on the other side of this, I've appointed Democrats on these same boards. Now, these boards and commissions, ladies and gentlemen, they're not politically motivated. There really should be no discussion about Democrat, Republican. We have to put some unaffiliates on. This is a man that was a volunteer firefighter for over 35 years. He sent me a letter saying, hey, look, I really want to do this. It's part of my, what I, what I love to do, being on the Conservation Commission. He happens to know some of the members, both Republicans and Democrats. And they recommended him. So we, we got to fill these positions that people, with people that want to do this. Now, we've got a situation on the Aging Commission, so I'll be meeting with Claudia Giulletti soon. We've got more Democrats on there. I don't care if they're Democrat or Republican, it's irrelevant to me. As long as they're going to serve the town. Now Sally makes a good point on the elected, that that's different, okay? But these boards are non-political. So that's why I recommend Alan Riggs, who wants this, who is, it's his passion.
Yes, and I noticed in his very nice letter outlining his desire, it was dated in 2020. So it's not like this just, he, his letter to you looks like in September of 2020, he wrote to you wanting to be on the Conservation.
I think it was this year, 2022.
I think that might have been a typo in this.
Yeah, it's 2022.
It says 2020 on the letter.
It does on his letter, but it's maybe this year.
Yeah.
I didn't notice that, but that, that was.
Okay, so it just came in. Well, let me just say one thing about this, not making it political. I'm approaching my 10th year on the board and I've done hundreds of these appointments along with you guys. And I could count on one hand, if not two or three fingers, the times that I've made an issue of, of the political affiliation. So let's not go there and say, oh, there's Sally making a political.
I'm not saying that.
Yeah, but, well, the first thing you said was, this isn't political. For, for 10 years, I, I have always appointed who I thought would be good people and likewise did not consider a party affiliation. But the last time this issue came up, which was, it had to do with Ms. Morphy's resignation and what commission was that, Community Services. And we had talked at length about unaffiliated. And we both came to an agreement that we need unaffiliated voters on our boards and commissions. So I support that. But we, I reviewed, or tried to remember as best I could that discussion. And so there was some discussion about, well, it always seems like we're filling Democrats' slots more with unaffiliated, so that's why I brought it up. I was very impressed with Mr. Riggs's letter and his dedication to the environment and his discussions about Peters Rock and Wharton Brook and all of that, both places close to my heart, as well as a lifetime resident, as he is. So I think he would do a great job on the Conservation Commission. So I will vote in favor of this appointment, but once again, just state that even with appointed commissions, we should make, we just have to pay a little bit more attention. You know, the, the state statute not only covers elected positions, but it does cover appointed positions about minority party representation and that not more than a certain number can be from one. So I just thought I would take this opportunity to remind this board that we do have some obligation to, to fill a spot with, with a like, although not a requirement, but fill a spot with similar affiliation. But with that said, and I will, I, and based on Mr. Riggs's amazing qualifications, I will support it, but hope that in the future, you might reach out to the DTC chair. Does that seem fair enough?
No, that's fair. I want to say two other things.
Sure. Sure.
Because it ties into what Sally just said. The only way for unaffiliates to have representation here in town is on these appointed boards. That's the only way to have some kind of representation, because we can't have unaffiliates on the elected boards. Now, on the other side of this, there have been times when we use the Aging Commission. I think if you look at that, there's probably seven Democrats on there, one unaffiliated and one Republican. So every year when these people are up, I'm not going to say we'll add more Republicans to balance it out. We go to the Democratic, through the Democratic process, and send everybody a letter. And if they want to stay on, I don't care if they're Republicans, Democrats, or unaffiliates. So we try to offer that also. We've got some of these appointed boards that would have more D's than ours, and the Aging Commission is a good example.
How many are on the Aging? You have the book there? Because seven out of nine seem, huh?
Five.
Five out of how many?
Because you said seven.
Five out of nine.
Seven would be a violation.
So five out of nine. How many Republicans are on that?
Well, there's a vacancy, but right now there's just one, which is Deacon Vicnow.
And unaffiliates?
One, two.
Two, okay. So we've got to find a way to get more unaffiliates to have the opportunity to be represented. So that's kind of what our thought process with Sally is.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention it because this is the first opportunity since that last controversial time, and I just wanted to bring it to light. That's why I wanted to have a discussion and ask Bill to make the motion. But again, you know, we've talked about it, and I think you understand my position, and you know that, again, this is very rare, that I would bring this up. Like I said, maybe twice in ten years. That's a pretty rare occurrence. So I will second the, with all of that discussion and understanding, and given Mr. Riggs' great letter here, I will second his appointment.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
No, I think, you know, I think I understand, you know, and the point that Sally's made. But, you know, but I think your point, Mike, is extremely important. You know, the minority representation rules are, I think, there to make sure that, you know, there is a voice from the, you know, from each party, or the ability for voices to be had from each party. But on the other hand, you know, there are so many unaffiliated voters in town, and I think your point is very valid, too, that we want to be able to give those people a voice, because they're most likely not going to be in any elected positions, or they are going to be able to contribute, as in the case of Mr. Riggs, who's very willing to contribute is on these, you know, appointed, appointed commissions. So we thank him for his willingness and step up, and for everybody else that's also unaffiliated. I think we take, I think, you know, we take Sally's comments in context, where, you know, I think she made a, you know, brought up a point, and I think you and I understand that.
We do, we understand.
So thank you, you know.
The one final point, fifty-two percent of the registered voters here in North Haven are unaffiliates. So I'm trying to help get them representation on some of these, on some of these appointed. But thank you.
Okay.
Good discussion.
I knew you had the number, I was grasping for the number in my own mind, I wonder if that was.
Fifty-fifty.
I think more than half are unaffiliated, so.
It has always been so.
It'll be segue to the vote.
It has always been so.
All right, so thank you very much.
Yes, so we can move on to number eleven, and I will make a.
Can you please just vote first?
Oh, I thought we did.
First and a second, but I didn't hear a vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val, paying more attention than I am. Number eleven, I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
I'll second that motion for the refunds.
Okay, excuse me, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item twelve, the next regular meeting of our Board of Selectmen is Thursday, December first. As Sally reminded us earlier, that's our group photo, so I'm wearing your red shirt, right?
I gotta wear my Christmas shirt, yes.
Christmas shirt. And that's going to be at six-thirty here in the upstairs conference room at Memorial Town Hall. So that concludes our formal agenda. Now we have public comment, Mr. Katz.
And I'd like to thank Valerie for the lecturn.
You're welcome.
Just a few questions about nineteen. The synthetic fields at the middle school, the, that was, was, is that the field that they took up?
Say again, Sherman, I'm sorry.
Did they take up the synthetic football field at the middle school?
No.
Oh, that hasn't been touched?
No, no, that's, the football field that's being redone is Vandecourt Field, where the track is. That's the, that was the grass field.
Oh, okay.
They're playing foot, they're playing football on the synthetic turf.
They are, yes.
The varsity is, and they're doing very well. I think they cracked, they cracked into the top ten in the state.
Last game tomorrow night.
Valley Service Road.
Yes.
I had the opportunity to use it a few times. It's a great shortcut.
Yep.
So you don't have to do Washington Avenue with twenty-five lights. There are no, there are no lights on there. There is naturally no center line on there. Is that a town road?
Yes.
So the town will have to pave it, plow it?
We've already paved it, yes.
Okay. Question for you, and you may have to wait for Jennifer, I'm not sure. Are we required to put lights on there, because it's a town road?
We're not required, but I think it's needed, and I already have a quote from the UI, and I don't know how we can do it. It's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to put the lights up there, so.
We have to pay it?
Oh, it's our responsibility.
Our responsibility.
Right.
If we don't do it, are we liable for any?
No.
Anything, no?
But it's, it's good public practice, Sherman, to have a road that is a very long road, that we are working with Amazon to take the traffic out, backside, to eventually illuminate it. So I'm working with the UI, right up to the president of the UI, to see what we can do, what the spacing needs to be on the poles, the type of LED, the preliminary quote's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it may have to go into next year's budget during the planning stages and less.
And then you have to pay for the electricity to illuminate it. And the reason I bring that up, it's extremely dark, and if anyone were to break down and have to change a tire, it's just not illuminated, so.
I agree.
Anything can happen.
I agree.
And then you have the crime aspect.
Right.
Which we all know happens.
Sherman, can I just interject?
Yeah.
What you will notice, though, and this is an initiative that I took up with the state, is on the Route Twenty-two Bridge over the highway down to Upper State Street, I've been working closely with the state, and you see new illumination there, because that was dark also.
Yes.
So now all those lights are pretty much up. You'll see posts that are not being used, those will eventually be taken out. And my objective was to get everything re-illuminated there, which they did for us, the state, but also make sure that corner, that intersection, Route Twenty-two and Valley Service Road, was illuminated, so you see greater illumination there. It's the rest, what you're saying, the rest of Valley Service Road.
The other thing with the state, it would be nice if they turned the lights on once in a while. They don't always turn the lights on. You have the Route Forty connector, it's not always on.
Yep.
Many of their roads. Eighty-eight Basset Road, we are responsible for the parking lot, the plowing, and maintenance, is that correct?
We have the fields. I think they're responsible for the plowing and the parking lot. I'd have to double check.
Yeah, something in the back of my mind goes back many years ago, that even though the state bought the school, we had to maintain the parking lot and the plowing. And I'm just wondering if ACES moves in, if you could transfer that responsibility to ACES and take that off of our backs.
That's a very good point. Make a note of that, Val, I'll double check that, I like that point very good. Yep.
Because, you know, the law, we only use a little bit. Well, I did ask at the last meeting about absentee ballots for the town meetings, and Jennifer was going to look that up, but she's not here. I looked over the automobile tax refunds. There's ballpark, twelve thousand dollars there. That's quite hefty. I'd hate to see that every single month. I can't say I've tallied the previous months up, but that's quite a lot of money for automobile refunds.
Refunds, do you mean?
Refunds.
But it gets countered by, many of these refunds are people got rid of cars because they bought new cars, and then we get their supplemental taxes in January. I'm waiting for mine, embracing for it. So.
Well, you only, you only get a refund if you turn your plate in, not if you use it for another car. So it, yes, if, if, those refunds are for cars where the plates have been turned in and not placed on another replacement car.
No, I'll get a supplemental bill, even though I have the same plate, because.
You have the same plate.
Yeah.
But, but that's if it takes it to the next car.
Right, right.
But if these cars are turned in, if these plates are turned in, then you don't get a supplemental.
But sometimes people turn them in and get a new car with a new plate, and then we get supplemental taxes. We do get them.
A lot of them are leases, too.
Yes, that's true. Leases that expire, and these people are getting either new leases or new cars, so it's not a total loss of money to us.
So far, it's a loss.
Yeah.
And we don't, and we don't go after people that registered their car in Florida, Vermont, Pennsylvania, Ohio.
That's a different issue.
That's another problem.
That's a different issue. I'm talking.
That's another half a million dollars we lose.
Yeah, I'm talking tax refunds, which, you know, I don't even know if people understand. Every month we go through these property refunds. It's when people sell cars, you know, because they paid their taxes.
They paid your taxes and they get your refund, yeah.
Right.
It took me eight months to get mine from the town. But that's another story.
It is, but.
All right, let's go on to the next.
There are supplemental taxes, not in every situation, but in many situations. Okay.
Amazon, they have a tax relief program. How many more years are on that, Mike?
Three, I think we're in the fourth year, it's a seven-year program.
It's a seven-year phase in.
So every year, just on the real estate, not on the personal property.
Right.
Which were a lot of, a lot of the taxes.
We get taxed, we get taxed on the personal property there?
Oh, of course, yeah.
Okay.
With no abatement on that.
And that's a lot of personal property in there.
Well, because, you know, there's always a normal, coming back to my business career, we always had a normal scaled depreciation of personal property. But Amazon keeps reinvesting, new robots, new racking systems, so we don't see the depreciation on that. And every year, every year, we phase into a higher level of percentage of the real estate. So every year we're making money, more money on Amazon because of the phase out, positioned that way.
Now, the, the future of Amazon in North Haven, pretty solid?
Oh, yeah, very solid, yeah.
Okay.
Very solid.
I mean, because they're talking about scaling back on a few things.
Right.
I just wasn't, and they build, they've been places all up, they build everywhere.
Right. And they continue to read, they work with me, they try to redefine themselves, they add more in there, they put a book binding segment in there. So they really worked well with us in terms of being a, I guess, a solid corporate citizen.
Yeah.
The downside to it is there's some traffic issues if the shift changes. That's why I'm trying to encourage Amazon to get the people out on Valley Service Road, ease that pressure.
I see more and more people are using it now.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing is the trucks are still using, they're still not using the entrance, the exit thirteen to go into the, to get onto the highway and off the highway at the north end of Amazon. They're still getting off at Twelve and backtracking up to the highway.
Mr. Katz, before you go on to your next item, can I just make a comment about Amazon? Well, first about the taxes, we get far more tax revenue, correct me if I'm wrong, from personal property than we do from the real estate taxes.
Oh, because of the phase up, yes.
Yeah, right, but just from value alone as well. We get far more, and there was no phase in, in personal property taxes.
That's what I just mentioned, right there.
The phase in was only real estate. We get far more revenue from the personal property. But I just wanted to just jump in on your concern about the lights and the cost, and it brings up a sore spot for me. You know, we passed a tax incentive agreement, which I helped participate in, and we had no waiver of building fees, and at Amazon's request, we amended our tax incentive agreement, and we allowed for a fifty percent waiver to them for their building fees, and they got the benefit of a seven-year tax incentive, which I, I supported the, I thought the tax incentive was, was great. But we made some accommodations in that original ordinance for their benefit. And we took this road on to make it all possible. I mean, that goes back years ago, when we made it a town road and the whole thing weaving around from Route Five. So we incurred a lot, and we changed our ordinance, and that saved them a considerable amount of money. I would knock on Amazon's door and see if they would help with those lights. That's all I'm saying.
I think that's, it's a good suggestion. Wow, from the right side of the table.
It's easier said than done. I'll do it.
You've got to understand that.
Yeah, but you have to do it in five thousand words or less.
I'm not going to diminish the point, because it's a good point, but they're by far the largest taxpayer in town.
Yeah.
So, you know, with scale up in terms of incremental taxes, and they do a lot for the town behind the scenes that people don't even know about, and they're cooperative on the traffic issues. I'm trying to get them to get more of that traffic out. But look.
Well, maybe if it was lit, more of their people would drive on it. If they split it with us and get it lit quicker.
Could I ask a question about?
Yes.
The, the land on both sides of that road, that Valley Service Road, up to Amazon, belongs to the town? The, the land?
You mean off of Route Five?
Uh, no.
No, the Valley Service.
Valley Service Road.
Oh, yeah.
You have all that, the woods.
Yep.
Is that, can we develop that? I, I, and remember one time, the Armored Corps of Engineers said that it was wetlands and we couldn't build a, a whole complex over there.
The west side is wetlands, for sure.
Seventy-four percent of it is in a national wetlands flood zone, so only twenty-six percent is developable. That's why I mentioned here four hundred, four hundred Valley Service Road, that's one of the dry spots, so we brought a buyer in there. So what I'm trying to do is, is, like at four hundred Valley Service, identify the dry parcels, and then introduce the, the prospective businesses to the current property owners. We don't own it all, Sherman. There's a lot of.
Oh, privately owned?
A lot of that's privately owned.
Oh, okay.
Right. All Sham, you remember, you remember the mall that wanted to come in here years ago?
Yes, I remember that.
Well, All Sham still owns probably fifty acres over there, so.
And if you look, if you're going up the road on the east side, it's kind of the back of a lot of.
Yes.
Businesses on the west side of Route Five. So I don't know how far, how far back those lots are. But most of the land is to the west, and that's where the Quinipiac is, and I don't think it's developable.
Yeah, you can see the water.
Yeah.
The, that, that business that might want to go in there with the police and fire, is that going to be a taxable?
It would be, if it was a standalone structure, in addition to the building that's there, which is kind of what we're trying for, it would be a taxable.
So it's, it's not a nonprofit?
No, no, not a nonprofit, no.
Just a couple of things that I want to bring up. I see that there are people that park in handicap parking spaces at restaurants, Burger King, McDonald's, at supermarkets, and I'm not about to look at someone and say, are they really injured, they really? But I see their parking, and they're not using, they're not, they don't have the handicap placards. I mentioned something to someone the other day, and he didn't care. He parked in it? He didn't care. I won't tell you what I said to him after that. But I see, I go to McDonald's, the Uber drivers come right in, park in the handicap parking spaces, and many people that don't have the placards, and I see people that can barely walk having to park further away. and many people that don't have the placards, and I see people that can barely walk having to park further away. And so my, my plea is to the public, please do not take a handicap space if you don't, you're not authorized to do so. It's a about a hundred and twenty dollar fine, and I know at some point the police may just do something about it. I've seen it done years ago. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, November eighth, very important to vote. This is a very important election. I'm not going to get political on it. But, and I know a lot of people know what my feelings are right now, but please think about it and get out and vote, not with your heart, but with your head. Thank you.
Supposed to be nice weather, so there's no excuse. Sometimes the weather has an impact on turnout.
No excuse for lack of turnout, right, so. This is Barrett.
Should be a warm day, I hope, with no rain.
Good evening. I will be very quick. I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. You mentioned the, the leaf pickup and the, the leaves out in the street. And I, my street, we're very fortunate, we're at the very beginning of the, the leaf pickup. And our concern was always that if you put it on your property when they came to pick it up, they wouldn't get it all off and into the street for pickup. But this year, I happened to notice that they started using backpack blowers. So they're very efficient and very effective at getting all the leaves into the street, and then they come along with the front-end loader and pick it up. And about an hour after they picked up the leaves from my property, all of the, the trees on our property then dropped more leaves, so we recovered again. But, but nonetheless, it, it, it was very effective. And, and I have to say, in addition to all of the examples that you gave, there's also the buses that have to stop at bus stops and pick up kids, and also people walking dogs that have to walk around these big piles that are, that are dumped out into the streets. So I urge everyone, please leave the leaves on, on your properties, and they'll be picked up appropriately. Secondly, regarding the event on November thirteenth designed to help the veterans in our town, how is it that people can sign up to, to volunteer?
That's done through Paulette De Mayo, and, but she has the network of veterans. They have the whole, I guess, the database. She handles that herself with her group, so...
So, so, but how do volunteers actually sign up?
Just show up, bring a rake, or a blower, or whatever you got.
Just show up, okay.
Now, I know that she's got, because I had a business in town that wanted to bring ten people there. She was like, I really don't need anymore. I've got all these people. But the answer to the question is, we show up on the green at nine o'clock.
Show up at the green, okay, because I, I just wondered if this is something that they've gone to the high school and tried to advertise this.
Colleges, high school.
Right. You'd mentioned Quinipiac, but I, I was hoping that North Haven high school students saw it as well. Okay. And then the third thing regarding this, the, the town meeting regarding eighty-eight Basset Road. So just to clarify, that if Aces does not only purchase, but then, you know, obviously have to renovate that, that facility, there would be no revenue to the town of North Haven, correct?
No, but it's part of the pilot program, the reimbursement from the state. So they're part of the calculation on pilot.
Mm-hmm, I see.
So we, we get, like we did, we got more this year from the state on pilot. So they'd be no different than a, you know, than a, a college, I guess, you know, Quinipiac. So all that's factored into the pilot reimbursement for the towns.
Yeah, that, that, we have three primary pilot, we have, you know, Quinipiac, we have the hospital area on Divine, and, and I'm doing them in order of amount of assessed value. And then the third is, is that land on Basset, so we'll still get our pilot money for that.
Still get the pilot, right, so...
That would be great, okay. I, I just wanted to clarify because...
Maybe potentially more if they, they get the...
Exactly.
Exactly. If, if their assessment goes, goes, goes up, yeah. Because that's what, that's what the, the pilot is a very complex formula that OPM uses, and it starts with a percentage and the assessed value.
That was my question, is how do they establish the pilot components?
Yeah, and then it just gets chopped up a little along the way. I mean, we never get the full value that we would have gotten had it been private, not exempt. But pilot was never made to totally replace...
That's right.
Um, revenue. It was just a payment in lieu of taxes, and it's a significant amount of money. And as Mr. Feta just said, it has gone up, so this will help us.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and again, playing out the hypothetical that they purchase it, they renovate it, they make it not only nicer, but potentially could, could make it more, make it available to even more special ed students. Would that increase traffic along Basset Road?
Well, you know, depending upon the, the special needs student population enrollment, potentially.
Right.
But if we all be bussing more buses coming in, which we're going in and out of there right now, we don't know at this point how many more buses it would be.
Because, again, for, for those listening at home, Aces refers to area cooperative educational services. And it actually covers, I think it's twenty-five different towns. I think they have an annual budget of over a hundred million dollars. But again, depending upon the types of services that they offer, and also the demand from various municipalities, my, my concern is that these students are not just coming from North Haven, that they'll be, you know, bussed in from other, other towns as well, in which case then you would have increased traffic along, along Basset.
Well, yeah, I mean, they have people coming in from other towns now.
Oh, no, I know, but, but as you increase the population at this particular facility, that, that you might have, you know, increase.
Well, years ago, we had the high school there, which doubled the population, and nobody complained in that area, so...
And then Gateway, which I don't know what the, what the enrollment was, all those years that it was Gateway, I'm not sure.
Right. That was, that was fully operational, was Gateway.
But, you know, I understand Mrs. Barrett's concern. You're always, you know, she's just trying to look at the full picture, but...
I, I just happen to live near the Aces that's over near Whitney and Skiff Street. And so all of those buses taking those left turns into that particular parking lot, it's, it really is an interruption to traffic.
So you mentioned the full picture. That's why I said earlier, the full picture really includes the cost of the town to buy it, the cost of the town to remediate it, and if we bought it, and what would we do with it? And if we sold it, and let's say apartments went in there, then you'd have all, you'd have the same traffic.
Mm-hmm, right, right.
So, you know, that's how I see it.
Lots of different issues, so...
I live on Basset. Actually, they go by, they go by my house. And I think you go back to Gateway, I think, you know, when you did have individual cars there, I'm not sure. I'm not sure that I remember traffic being bad. The biggest problem with Basset, actually, to be honest with you, is, is that, that a lot of people use it as a cutthroat because, to avoid Washington Avenue.
Sure.
So, you know, we have a lot of traffic, and I think the bigger issue is not, not so much traffic, but people speed.
Right.
That's where I advocate pretty soon.
And, and blind driveways around those curbs and so, absolutely, right.
Fully people, but I'm not sure that's practical.
Right, right. I, I remember when they taught motorcycle classes at, at Gateway in that parking lot. And they still do, yeah. So, so again, I, I think that might also be evidence that, that we're responsible for that, for that particular parking lot if, if we're able to offer those courses, so. And then I'd just like to reiterate the point made by all of you, as well as by Mr. Katz, that please get out and vote on November eighth. It's very important. Encourage all of your friends. If there are people that are, have physical limitations, you can always call ahead, and you can make reservation, you can make, you know, some sort of accommodations for curbside voting. And I think that that is another alternative to the absentee ballots. But, but I think that that's something that not too many people know about, but it is, it's a wonderful feature that, that our town offers, so thank you and have a good night.
The poll workers do a great job accommodating, accommodating people.
Absolutely, and I'd like to thank them all in advance, yes.
It's a long day for them, but they'll do anything to get, to help a voter who's in some way challenged to get there, so...
Yes, and I'm always impressed by the security and the steps that they go through to ensure that the ballots are, are, you know, under lock and key and that they really do a fantastic job. So thank you all in advance. Okay, good evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Barrett. Bill Richards, yes.
I have one, one question on the Basset Road there. Now, Bill was saying it's number eighty where the fields are on, eighty-eight for the school, right?
I believe so, yep.
Now, with the fields up there, we use the parking at the school up there now, all right? If that was sold to somebody else other than Aces, are we going to have a problem with the fields up there for parking?
No, because the agreement is tied into the fact that we always are always going to own the fields, so we're never going to lose the fields.
All right, so no, still the fields, but with the park, in other words, with the parking area, say something moved in there and it was full of cars over there, where would they?
Yeah, no, no, no. I mean, I don't see cars there because it's students' bill. They're going to come in on buses, or parents are going to drop them off, so there's not going to be a jammed parking lot during the school day.
So it won't be like no playoffs, or they use it for night playing in there?
They won't, no. We will.
Yes, I mean, for the town, the town organizations, right?
Yes, so the town organization.
Won't have any problem with parking up there, right?
We've never had problems with parking. It's always been...
Well, I'm just saying, because if you had a new owner other than, say, Aces, and that you could work together, so we still have, be reliable.
Right, but Aces would be owning it. That's my, that was my point.
Right, well, say if they backed out and then there were, somebody else ended up buying it.
Well, no, that would have to go, we'd have the first right of refusal at that point.
Okay.
So in other words, they, they, they want to buy it, but if, under what you just mentioned, we have the final right on that.
Okay, all right.
And this meeting is to give up the right so that they can own it and put special eds in, okay, so...
The town uses those fields for all of the purposes that Mike listed after the workday, basically.
Right, right.
Or on weekends.
And weekends, so, right.
Yeah, and there are lights there on some of the fields, right?
Yeah, actually, Quinipiac put the lights in. They under, they, they covered the cost for the girl softball, so...
Okay, and then another thing I want to say is with the Affordable Housing Committee going on, I'm glad to see that we're taking our time, moving along, all right, and making it right. So this can be correct for the town of North Haven. And the, I heard a figure last night, I think only twenty percent of the towns in Connecticut have complied to this at all. So we want to do it right. That's my...
Well, I appreciate your service, Bill. You've been right with it when we appointed you, right from the beginning, so...
Yeah, so, no, even if it rolls over until after the first year, because you have to get it out for thirty, post it for thirty-five days, out meetings.
Yeah.
That's good, but it's going to end up right.
Yes.
And for the best interest of all the people who live in North Haven.
This, this meeting that we were discussing during our, on our agenda, November fourteenth, as we were reading it, it said it's going to be in person or via Zoom. Can a member of the public watch it via Zoom? I mean, how do, how, how do they get an invite for that?
We'll have to find out from Jennifer on that, because normally, like with the COVID in the past years, we have the Zoom, you get to log in. If you go onto the website, you'll probably be able to find the code that you have to log into. So, you know, maybe she can...
I believe it would be open to the public. It's a public meeting, so anybody would, should be able to use the Zoom link. It'll be posted on the website.
Oh, it will, okay.
Under the normal law, because when, the one that got canceled,
Yeah.
she had given to me to post, and I, so I already saw what the format was, and it was a Zoom link that would have been on the website for the, on the agenda. So I would assume anybody could click the link and, and attend.
Okay, good. That's good to know.
So the meeting room over there at the annex is big enough where people walk in, I hope?
I, I, Jennifer's concern was she wanted something where the members of planning and zoning and of your group on the committee would be able to speak to each other. So the board, the room that they're using at the Board of Ed is a square-shaped setup so that you could all talk to one another for the purpose of trying to, you know, flesh out the, the plan rather than have it disjointed.
And the way it's configured for Board of Ed meetings, there's room for, I would say, twenty-five people? Twenty? Twenty members of the public and chairs, chairs like these. Yeah, there's some room, yeah.
All right.
Do you get many members of the public attending your meetings?
Earlier days, we had. We had different people in, but now, you know, it's not that many.
Okay.
So that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your service.
And the, the plan estimate will be updated every, what, five years, I think?
Yeah, it's every five years, and by, uh, was it June first we had to have it done? Then we went for the extension, so...
Probably already into...
We're already into the next five.
Fine. I mean, which is good to know, isn't it, you know, that it is an ongoing document.
Yes, yes.
After we finalize it the first time, it'll be the last time.
You might be appointed again soon.
I know, and I think, I think, well, the second time around would probably be easier, because...
Don't go anywhere.
You're going to be reeled back in sooner or later, so...
I'm going to move to Florida.
Mr. Katz.
Is that affordable?
I, I just want to talk about the, the Aces situation. As you know, I, I was on the school vans for seven or eight years. I transported the special needs children, both the pre-K as well as the high school. And I went to very, a lot of the different facilities. They have a very good system, one, one station for traffic. Most of the kids come in in vans and a few on buses, and they move these vehicles very quickly through the school. They, they empty them and get them on their way. So they, I'm sure they'll set up a pretty good setup, and that parking lot is big enough so they can circle if they have to. And as far as the use of that parking lot, the employees of the school probably wouldn't take a third of that parking lot for, during the day. And they don't have night classes. None of the ones that I've, I've never heard of a night class. So after three o'clock, that place is empty, so.
That's what we were saying, yeah. There's no, there won't be any conflict for parking availability for our athletic events.
No.
See, even when Gateway was there, I don't remember.
No, I don't.
You know, when you had it, all the students driving. But, I mean, it's good, it's good that Nancy brought that up, just so.
Yeah, okay.
I appreciate that, so, Bob.
Okay, I think...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, see everybody in December. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.